The meeting to order. Councilmember Garola, will you lay this in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Georgie, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garola?
Here.
Mayor Protem Viasenor?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Brogi?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, going to item number five, presentations, we have none tonight. So, number six, I'm going to open the public comments. Our first speaker is Brandy Hollis. And Brandy, you know the rules.
Thanks, I do. I like to follow rules. Alright, once again, my name is Brandy Hollis, I live in the city of Fillmore. I just want to say thank you, I know I've told Troy and I've told Public Works what a great job is being done at our fields, it's been amazing. Even when I go to practice, my practice area is lush, it looks nice, there's no trash. And I'm not the only one that notices, parents, coaches, a lot of people are saying positive things, so it's really exciting, I always like to lead off with something nice. But with that said as well, I know we're getting ready to change to, AYSO moves down to, to Rivers and then Raiders Football moves up to Shields. It's just a whole silly thing that needs to be resolved when the time changes. For next year, I'm not expecting anything this year, but if we could get that sit down like we were talking about, that would be great with whoever's going to be in charge of that, I don't know if it's Troy or David or, I'm not really sure. But with Raiders Football and AYSO, so that way, I really think it's important for our community groups to come together. It really makes no sense with almost 700 players we closed at, to be split between two parks when we can easily be accommodated at one park. And then when we don't have to move, it's, it just, it just makes sense. So if we could get that meeting set up, I would really appreciate it. And I think that's all I have for you guys today. So, great job and keep it up and can we just work on a solution for next year?
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations and Comments. Do we have any?
Sure, Mayor, I'll make, I'll make a comment. And thank you, thank you Brandy for bringing it to your attention and we are, that's coming in the future to talk about. I, I made this comment a little similar at our last session, but I just wanted to thank again our residents for talking to us council members and letting us know the issues. Just in this last week, there was a constituent who called about their particular road residential street needing to repaving and our staff was excellent in following up and getting that information back. Same thing with cleanup at a park, same thing with reaching our water billing department and I just wanted to say thank you to our Fillmore city staff and how responsive they have been to addressing any issues that arise. So, residents, please understand that and know that, that you know, we're here for you and continue to reach us and we'll, we'll help you to get things set right in our city and to help you as much as we can. So I just wanted to make that comment. And the second one is, I wanted to thank the city staff here, I want to thank those that are staff at the Active Adult Center, Chief Lalo with our police department and Chief Garola and their staff. We all came together for a small meeting today regarding our local community of people with disabilities. And we invited other providers who, who serve this community and we just had sort of a meeting greet session, we talked about how we can, improvements can be made in terms of making sure that we're all connected to this particular population, we know it's a very vulnerable population in our community. So I just appreciate everyone coming out and being a part of this meeting and moving forward, we're going to have a few follow-up tasks, so just want to say thanks.
Anybody else? Okay?
Can I add something real quick? It'll be like a two-second thing.
The, the public comment period's been closed, I mean, we'd have to go back, just...
Well, she had like a minute, a minute and nineteen left, if she can say it in a minute and nineteen?
Yeah, that'd be fine, if, maybe before she does that, if there's any other comments from the council, wrap that up and then go to jump back.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to jump back to item number six, public comments, and I can't put a minute and nineteen, but I'll keep you honest on it.
It's okay, I'll keep it real quick, just in case the city council doesn't know when you're talking about people with disabilities, AYSO Epic is back, this is actually the second season, we have almost sixty players now, so that includes, it's for children with disabilities, so once again, everyone plays and by everybody, we mean everybody. So, AYSO Epic is now in Fillmore, you don't have to go to Camarillo like they used to and actually, they'll be in an article in this Thursday's paper with all the contact information, I can send it to you as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brandy, did you say there were sixty kids?
Sixty local kids, thank you guys.
Yeah, it went from twenty-seven to sixty-ish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move back to item number seven, to City Comments, Reports, Recommendations and Comments, does anybody have anything? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight, Consent Calendar.
Okay, I'll motion to accept Consent Calendar and reading aloud, item eight C, the adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash nine-five-three updating chapter nine point one-three of Fillmore Municipal Code and also item eight D under Consent Calendar, approval of the second reading of ordinance twenty-three dash nine-five-one to update code enforcement procedures set forth in Fillmore Municipal Code, chapter one point zero-nine, article two.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All, anybody opposed, motion carries, moving on to item number nine, nine A, annexation of five properties to landscape and lighting assessment district number two. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you, good evening, Roxanne Hughes, your city engineer, and I'll walk you through this item. So, I think everybody knows where Pole Creek, oh, I'm on the wrong item, annexation of five different projects, okay. So we have sort of a routine condition of approval when we entitle a project in the city of Fillmore, if they're adding any street trees or street lighting as part of their project, that they have to annex into our street lighting and landscaping assessment district as they build their project so that then, ongoingly, that property, no matter who it changes hands to, will pay an assessed tax to offset the city's costs for ongoingly maintaining the street trees and/or paying energy costs and maintenance costs to Edison for the streetlights. So Edison owns and operates the streetlights, but we pay the energy and maintenance bills. And so these, the assessment district helps us with that cost. The item before you tonight, you have the full report and resolutions of intent, so we're, we sort of took five different properties that have developed in the last while that never got annexed and put them all into one engineer's report. This is five separate annexations that'll require five separate public hearings when we, when we revisit this in November after the ballot process. But by combining it into one engineer's report, there was an economy of scale, we were able to kind of split the costs between the five property owners and there's cost savings all around for that. So, the five properties are DP-oh-six-oh-six, which you probably know better as Ventura Groves, right there on Ventura Street. There's the stop at Fillmore, which is development permit oh-seven-oh-three, Red Engine Brewery, which is development permit fourteen-oh-one, Rotorcraft Support Inc., which is development permit fifteen-ten, and Sonic Drive-In, which is DP-eighteen-oh-one, which that is not constructed yet, but it's going to go right in the corner of Orange Grove and Ventura Street, which is Highway one-twenty-six. So, the, the gist of it is, when they plant the street trees, then we have a maximum assessment per street tree, per property that we calculate and we look at their landscaping plans. The trees that have already been planted and have been accepted for maintenance by the city, we will levy those fine, those fees to the property owners upon annexation for the current fiscal year, we'll prorate and do a handbill for the current fiscal year. Some of these properties, the landscaping isn't installed yet, like Sonic is a perfect example of that, they, they haven't started construction yet. So like the Sonic property is going to install a number of street trees and so we're getting them annexed in, once those trees are planted and the city takes them over, it'll turn on that assessment in the fiscal year that that happens. There's an existing streetlight that benefits Sonic and so we'll levy that fine for the streetlight, that fee right away. And so, on each of the properties, that's, that's the situation, if there are streetlights and they're active, then we'll levy this year, if there are street trees and we're maintaining them, we'll levy this year, if they're not installed yet or they're not turned on yet, then when that happens, we'll start to levy those taxes to these individual properties. And so I've reached out to each of the property owners, I let them know this is moving forward, they are all very well aware that they had project conditions that said that they were required to annex. Typically, they're supposed to annex prior to occupancy, some of them do have occupancy, but not final occupancy and there's a little bit of everything going on amongst these five. But the idea is that tonight, it's before you to adopt the intent to levy resolutions for each of the five properties, call for and then approve the engineer's report that's already been prepared and set before you and it goes through, you know, the, that's, that's why it was nice to be able to kind of knock five projects out in one because it, it's all the same, what we're doing is you're building new improvements, the city's going to take them over, we're going to charge you to ongoingly maintain them and, and it's a prorated benefit for the public as well as the property. And so, the, the good stuff is in the back of the report, there's assessment rules and summaries and just to give you a flavor of it, like for FY twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, the max fine per street tree, per property is a little eighty, over eighty-two dollars per tree for the year. And the maximum assessment rate per streetlight is three hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents per streetlight per year. And then those would be an annual fee that's charged per streetlight, per property, per tree, per property, to offset the city's costs for maintaining those improvements. I think that the, the, tonight's resolutions for intent and then accepting the engineer's report as presented, or if you have any comments on the engineer's report, you can let me know and we can get that corrected. But by adopting the resolution of intent and approving the engineer's report, you give staff the authority to move forward and we will then send ballots to each of the property owners involved on these five projects. And like I said, I already gave them the heads up, this is happening tonight, when the ballot comes, please vote and return it. A yes vote would mean you annex and you meet your project condition of approval and we can check that box and get it out of everybody's way. If you don't return the ballot or if you vote no, we have to start the whole process over again because you are required to annex to these districts and we would have to charge you again to prepare another engineer's report and this time it's just you. I think it's eighty-five-hundred dollars per project usually to do an annexation, but by sharing it five ways, it's like seventeen-hundred dollars, everybody's getting that discount, thankfully. It's a lot of work to do it for one little property, which is why we had the idea like, let's just put all these together because we're, it's kind of like a big catch-up, we haven't done one in a while. So, that's the gist of it, I think the overview, you guys are probably familiar with the five projects and the process, the ballots have forty-five days, they have until November fourteenth, which is, will be set in the public hearings tonight for November fourteenth. And up until the public hearing opens, they can turn the ballots back in and then we open the ballots at the public hearing and identify which ones are being annexed and then they're, as of November fourteenth, this hopefully will be completed for all five projects. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
And it, I think you already answered it, I was, I was wondering why some of these had waited, like, you know, the stop, the Fillmore Groves for, for so long before we've already done this? So, I guess you answered it by saying we could, we could give them a, a thing of scale, I mean, we can scale it down to where they have less cost, correct?
Yes, that's not the only reason we waited and other, other things like Fillmore Groves, they have a temporary C of O while there was a number of outstanding other items that they were addressing as well, this being one of them. And then the stop, you know, they're partially occupied, they're not occupied fully and this has been on the to-do list for a little while as well and so it all did come together where some of them could have done it sooner than later, but we, we start, started this at the beginning of the year, like, let's group them all together and then now everybody's in on the same timeline.
But it sounds like the whole, I mean, it's, it's cheaper in the long term.
In the long run.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, anybody have any other questions?
The only question I had written down here is, I'm assuming that when these projects came to Fillmore, when they first presented, they were aware that they were going to have this fee at some point in time? This is not anything new to them, you know?
It is in their conditions of approval, so on entitlement, when they sign and agree to the conditions of development, one of the conditions of development expressly requires this annexation and that they pay for the annexation.
Okay, and does it specify in the annexation that it's going to be the streetlights and the trees?
Yeah, it says landscaping and lighting.
And lighting, right.
It kind of generally says landscaping and lighting, but really what we mean landscaping is just the trees.
Okay, and then, because all of these are in such close proximity, can you clarify for me a little bit about the, the lighting? Some other words, let's just hypothetically say there's six streetlights in the vicinity of these different properties. So, does that mean that each developer, each property owner is going to pay three twenty-one per streetlight?
The streetlights that are physically adjacent to the property frontage are the only ones that...
Oh, I see, okay.
That apply to that property.
Okay.
Yeah, so Sonic has one and Red Engine will have one when they install it.
Gotcha.
But like a corner property like Rotorcraft, there are seven streetlights surrounding it because it's on a corner and there's several on both frontages.
Okay.
Okay. I do, Mayor, thank you. So my, my question or my comment is about Sonic and the, and the single streetlight that's there on one-twenty-six. And looking at the map and seeing how the back alley is probably going to be used, is there, was there any discussion about a streetlight on the back alley portion?
We don't normally put streetlights in alleys, that, for a number of reasons, it's usually somebody's backyard and, you know, lighting and photometrics and, but as that develops, the building itself has building lights and there's lighting to where that takes care of it, that it wouldn't be a public streetlight in an alley.
It would cover.
It's usually not room for it either.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I was thinking too, maybe the lights just from the building itself might cover that area.
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a photometric plan that they submit as part of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that...
I have a technical procedural question, if there are no more questions from council. The different resolution, it looks like there's ten different resolutions and I just want to make sure when there's a motion from council, that it looks like there are two requested actions from council and I wanted to make sure I had a clear picture of what the numbers are.
Of the resolutions, you mean?
Yeah, so it looks like the first request is adoption of resolutions initiating proceedings and ordering the consolidated engineer's report for each of the five annexation territories. Is that for resolution, the resolutions ending in fifty-two to two, three, four, five, six?
Yes, and then the next was the next five, yes.
Is the next...
Those five and five, you've got it. Mm-hmm. But do they need to say those numbers in the motion if you...
Yeah, I mean, I want to have them break it apart into two different, it looks like there's two different recommendations.
Two per property, correct?
It, it looks like that, yeah.
Thirty-nine, fifty-two through fifty-six and then... Is that what it is? I didn't print them all out on my staff report right here.
And then the, the resolutions preliminarily approving the consolidated engineer's report and setting the separate public hearings for November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, that would be fifty-seven to sixty-one then, probably, is that right? Okay.
Correct. So, if you want to do it in two motions, it's adopting the resolutions, like I said in the motion, the, adopt the resolutions of intent, which will be thirty-nine, fifty-two through thirty-nine, fifty-six and then approving the engineer's report and that's thirty-nine, fifty-seven through thirty-nine, sixty-one.
But you, we can do it in one motion, correct?
I, I think since there's two different recommendations, I recommend doing it in two different motions, just so it's broken apart.
Okay.
So one, the first motion would be adoption of the, the set of resolutions ending in fifty-two to fifty-six regarding the resolutions initiating proceedings and then take the second set separately.
Okay.
I'm sorry, fifty-two to fifty-six, are you talking page numbers?
No.
Fifty-two to resolutions.
Resolutions number twenty-three dash...
Thirty-nine, fifty-two.
Thirty-nine, fifty-two through twenty-three dash thirty-nine, fifty-six, yeah.
And then we're going to do another motion to...
Okay.
And, sorry, Michael, just a point of clarification, the first is adopting resolutions of intent with thirty-nine, fifty-two through fifty-six and the second is approving...
The, the resolutions preliminary approving Consolidated Engineer's Report and that would be the ones ending in fifty-seven.
But we want to do that in two motions?
Yes, correct.
Okay. We can do one vote on it or just...
Just, I, do two separate votes, just so it's...
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first.
Okay, I, I will motion that city council adopt these five resolutions of intent numbered thirty-nine, fifty-two through fifty-six.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say no? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion on the second.
Okay, I will motion that city council approve the resolutions thirty-nine, fifty-seven through sixty-one of the Consolidating the Engineers Report.
Okay, I have the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item numbers nine B.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Authorized payment request number one to Heartstone Multi... Multi-Asset Entity, C L L P Eldorado Flood Control Channel from Heritage Valley Parks Community Facilities District, number five, Improvement B with Bond Construction Funds.
Excuse me, Mayor, I need to recuse myself of this item, I live in the area.
Okay.
And I'll also recuse myself from this item and item nine C as well.
Okay.
Same here.
You have a long time, stay out there, huh, Chris? I don't know, is she good?
Dave, I'm good though, aren't I?
Okay.
Wait, I cleared everybody out, sorry. So, good evening, council members, Mayor Austin, I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Today's staff is recommending city council authorized payment request number one for eleven million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents relating to the Heritage Valley Park construction costs for the Eldorado Flood Control Channel. These costs were incurred by developer Heartstone Multi-Asset Entity C. The funds to pay for the request are from the Community Facility District Number Five, Series Twenty-Twenty-Three Special Tax Funds, Construction Funds. The city and Griffin Homes insured acquisition agreement for CFD number five on July first, two thousand and six. Heartstone was subsequently assigned to the agreement in two thousand and ten. CFD number five consists of two improvement areas, area improvement A and B, with the agreement and subsequent amendments paying for various public improvements associated with the seven hundred and ninety-five homes of the Heartstone project. In two thousand and fif, in two thousand and fifteen, the city issued over seventeen million of bonds on behalf of improvement area A and allocated approximately fifteen million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, a million, to the construction account for reimbursement to the developer costs relating to various Improvement A facilities. On May ninth, twenty-twenty-three, the city issued nineteen point six-two-five million of bonds on behalf of Improvement Area B. Those Series Twenty-three bonds allocate approximately seventeen point nine-six-six million to the construction account for developer cost reimbursements of city facilities, the Eldorado Flood Control Channel and the Pole Creek Bridge. Payment request number one is related to the Eldorado Flood Control Channel, the initial request was approximately two, twelve point two million and was reviewed and discussed in the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dol, seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents was determined as payment request number one. The payment is allowed under section five oh, six A of the agreement and is payable when funds are available in the city facility account in accordance with terms of the facility, fiscal agent agreement. As the, I believe the project was approximately five to six million over the original budget. There's no fiscal impact to the city as the Series Twenty-Twenty-Three bonds, the construction account proceeds would cover payment request number one. This meets the city council's goals in the areas of fiscal management, smart growth and infrastructure. This is the end of my presentation, I'm available for any questions?
Any questions?
Deborah, yes, thank you, Mayor. And my, one question is one of the last things you mentioned about just the project and if you have the answers to this, that, that would be great, if not, not a problem, but for the, for to come in over budgets by like six million, do, do you know the reasons for that?
There is costs related into the report that's in the back, but to ask more detail, that would be more of a question that you can research and provide for your later date if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to authorize a payment request number one for eleven million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents. And how far do I have to go on this, Michael? The whole thing?
Becomes a word salad.
Yeah, relating to Heritage Valley Parks Construction.
Relating to Heritage Valley Parks Construction, Kosovo Eldorado Flood Control Channel components incurred by developer Heartstone Multi-Asset Entity with funds from Community Facilities District Number Five, Series Twenty-Twenty-Three Special Tax Bonds.
Wow, she read it all.
I'll second.
Second, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, moving on to item number nine C. Agreement with Heartstone for reimbursement for Pole Creek Debris Basin Cleanout from Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Seven. Is Dave out on this one too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, now I'm on the right item, good evening. As I was saying, I think we all know where Pole Creek Basin is, over in the middle of the Bridges subdivision, it sort of divides the east from the west of the Bridges subdivision. The basin itself sits on property that is owned by the developer, Heartstone, including from the, what we call the sill, like there's the basin and the bottom of the basin on the south end, there's a drop down to what we call the low-flow channel that takes it from the edge of the basin, under the bridge and out to Santa Clara River. And that low-flow channel is still Heartstone property, but will become city property and the basin itself is Heartstone property, but will become Ventura County Watershed Protection District. Years ago, like when this project was first entitled, they created a new Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Seven for paying for all of the flood control facilities inclusive of the basin and the big box storm drain and the levees and there's like a lot of different moving parts to the storm drain system, Pole Creek Basin being one of them, inclusive of the low-flow channel. We started collecting levees against those storm drain improvements, including the basin in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen fiscal years with our annual assessment updates because A, we knew they were getting ready to turn the basin over to the county and when the basin does turn over to the county, the county would be doing the maintenance and operation of the basin using funding from the Maintenance District. I knew that the basin would, when it needed to be cleaned out, it was going to be a significant investment and not something that you could collect in one fiscal year. And so I started collecting some money each fiscal year and then when it didn't get transferred, we would just take the money that was collected and put it into a capital improvement fund balance within the district. And so over these last several years, we've accumulated a little over two million dollars, which sounds like a lot, and the finance department routinely would tell me, we have all this money sitting here. We need to get rid of it. I'm like, no, we don't. No, 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 no. That's like a twenty million dollar levy and a ten million dollar basin, and if, if and when anything goes wrong and needs repair, it's going to be several million dollars. And we need the district to have funding to take care of its flood control facilities, which are expensive to maintain. And so we've built it up over the time. We do not want to spend all two million dollars because we still have to ongoingly maintain the levees when we accept them. Right now, we have not accepted them, but we will be. The levees are going to the city, the low-flow channel's going to the city. The offsite storm drain already came to the city, and that is ours to maintain, and we are going to be dispersing some funds to clean out that box channel from these funds that are assessed as well. We have maintenance money for that. That's not in the capital account right now within the assessment district. But the idea is that since we've been collecting levees to maintain the basin and the levees, two different kinds of levees, you know what I mean, right? Then whether the county accepted it or hasn't, and it's the owner that's doing the maintenance, we've been collecting funds to do the maintenance. And so we talked to the city's attorney's office. We talked with Hearthstone, who brought the request forward, and, you know, the municipal services director, the finance director. We all agree that we actually have obligation to expend those funds for the maintenance for which they were collected for. And so the big question is that's not totally solved because Hearthstone is getting cost estimates on doing it. We're doing everything in our power to minimize the cost of it by finding local places that we can take the soil from the basin, seeing if there's buyer for any of the soil. Maybe we could actually generate revenue to offset the cost of it. But it's, the engineering that they did, they did the measuring, and what's interesting is this all turned up this storm season. It's not like for the last ten years, the developers have been neglecting the basin and not cleaning it out, because they have cleaned it out on a couple of times, but it's only been small stuff that's been in there. This last storm season with the debris flows that we got, the basin did its job, and it captured all the debris that came out of the mountains, and it's a big enough basin, so it's eighty percent full, and that's, you know, acre feet, acre feet of, you know, soil that we need to pick up and move, and we can't just pick up and dump it in the river where it would have gone if the basin wasn't there. So they're estimating anywhere between a million and two million. One estimate was like three million, but we don't have a contractor onboard yet. By putting this agreement in place, we're basically saying that we have to follow the requirements of the assessment district, so they got to follow public contract code. They've got to get multiple bids from qualified low bidders, or qualified bidders, and then go with the qualified low bidder for the work, and pay prevailing wages, and, you know, do all the requirements of the law to spend this money, and then agree with the city engineering and municipal services director, and the finance team will all review how much is going to remain in the capital when it's done. So I see it being more of a cost share with Hearthstone. They'll probably have to pay into it some also, and the district will pay into it some. And then on the higher level, you know, that's what this agreement takes care of, the immediate need, because we're expecting a lot of storms this season again. And if the basin isn't cleaned out, it won't have the capacity, and if we do get another debris flow, it'll back it up into the channel, which will cause a flood through the city, and it's like not good. We don't want to go there. So we need to get this done. It's probably six weeks of trucking that needs to happen. So we didn't want to wait until we have the contractor onboard and then come to council with the contract all executed, because that would delay the start of work. So that's why I'm kind of bringing the agreement with Hearthstone forward right now while they get it, you know, in parallel, right? We're bidding the work right now while we're here talking to you about, let's get the agreement in place so that we can do it as quickly as possible and get it cleaned out before the storm season hits, because if we do get an early rain and everything gets wet, you can't clean it out when it's wet, right? So they've already used their own money to clear the low-flow channel. They're getting ready to clean. I think this week they cleaned out the bypass fish ladder, and they're going to divert the flows to dry it the rest of the way out so that when we onboard, the contractor will be ready to move. So it's all kind of going to happen fast, hopefully. And then on the bigger picture, I've been asking, and we're going to, you know, follow through with this, both Ventura County Watershed and Hearthstone, the operations and maintenance manual for the basin has been back and forth between County Watershed and Hearthstone for a long time, because County Watershed is, they're kind of hanging their hat on the environmental permits and saying, you have to, you know, solve the fish passage issue that NIMS and Fish and Wildlife have kind of on our behalf, because it was already an issue before the development even came into town. So I've got a little bit of a chip on my shoulder about that with the county, like, really? But I need the life cycle cost, like how often is this kind of debris flow going to happen? And how much is it going to cost? And therefore, year over year, how much do we have to really be putting away? I just kind of estimated it myself, and I'm, it's actually the sweet spot as long as this, because this winter was historic. Like, it's, we hit flows and intensities that we haven't seen in decades, right? So the idea is that we won't see that again for another decades, and then we'll replenish the budget in the district so that if it happens, when it happens again, we have full funding for it. If, you know, the weather's been changing and everybody's crystal ball is broken, but the good news is that the basin was, you know, sized by Watershed to have an extra twenty-five percent capacity. So although it's eighty percent full, we really only have to get sixty percent of it cleaned out and it's back at capacity, right? So all that works together, but I need the O and M manual and those life cycle costs of how often and how much. This will be a good learning lesson for Watershed and Hearthstone and the city on how much it costs when that basin is full, and then how often do we expect this to happen? I don't really expect it to happen again this season so quickly, but we keep hearing we're going to have a bunch more atmospheric rivers. I'm sure you guys have heard it, too. So we're definitely like, we got to get this cleaned out just in case, right? And then it'll be ready to go. And then we'll know more about the cost and what we may be able to do to help keep the cost down next time in having places to take it, because if you take it to the landfill, that's top dollar. The landfills don't want dirt like that, and they charge a lot to take the dirt. And so finding local landowners, we're talking to the Equestrian Center, who's trying to build a fill blanket. We're talking to people down in the business park whose sites are low that need a lot of fill. If we can keep it local and move it, you know, a short distance, then it's a lot less cost. So that's sort of the big picture and the detail, hopefully. The agreement itself is pretty straightforward. It includes a pay request application that they would have to go through, that everybody would have to approve and sign, and it incorporates, like I said, all of the legalities of using CFD funding, which are public funds that have been accumulated through a maintenance district like this. So I will entertain questions.
Any questions?
Well, one question you answered, so we don't know exactly where this is going to be deposited at, so once it is.
Right. It's a lot, it'll probably be multiple sites, and we're trying to avoid taking all the landfill, because that's going to be top dollar.
Once they start emptying it out, do you have an idea as to how long it will take to actually empty it and get it? It's going to depend on where it's going, I guess, but.
Right. Around six weeks of trucking.
How many?
That's what, six weeks.
Six weeks?
That's what we're estimating.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing El Nino this winter. I think we may have another wet year, so, yeah. And then the only other question ahead on the very last sentence, under the discussion sentence, it says, "The city attorney's determined that if Hearthstone follows a public bid in contracting procedures consistent with the district requirements, the city may approve this request." So it sounds like part of this is up in the air, like we're still pending.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying, that, and Hearthstone has agreed to follow the contracts, and that's, they've used the CFD to build the bridge, to build the offsite storm drain, to, you know, they're not, they're very familiar with those processes and procedures, and they've already agreed to do that. And so that's just saying that if they don't follow those procedures, then we won't disperse the funds.
Okay.
So they have already agreed to follow this, and the agreement says that they'll follow those. And then if it's found that they didn't follow those required legals, then we can't give them the funds. They'll have to pay for it themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. You said over six weeks. How many truck trips is that going to be?
Oh, I don't have a number in my head. It's several per day. They'll be trucking pretty much daily for the majority of the day, just a truck, you know, every half hour or something.
If you can figure out the number and just send it to all of us.
We'll be approving a haul route. It's a lot of trucks.
There's going to be a lot of trucks for six to eight weeks, a lot of material in the basin. Depends on how many trucks you run it per day, that's how quicker you can do it, how much water.
This is Lance Melring with Hearthstone.
That's what I was getting at, was over six weeks, roughly how many trucks are you going to be running Monday through, Monday through Sunday, or?
Up to three thousand yards a day is probably the average day. So if you go those six weeks and you're running, you know, that's, you know, three thou, that's fifteen thousand.
I'm sorry, would you mind coming to the microphone and sharing this? I'm sorry, put you on the spot.
Come join me, Lance.
I just know it's a lot of trucks, too.
I'm Lance Melring with Hearthstone.
So the trucking, depending on where we're going, if we're going to the end of the west end of town, then that trucking will go a lot quicker and probably be down to that six weeks. If you have to go outside of town, which one of the, what we're talking about, taking it all the way to Chiquita, then you're talking a much longer period of time, but you're also not going through town. You're going through the development and heading out on Tressal Way. So it depends on where we actually take it, will greatly impact the duration.
And you're going to try to minimize, I assume?
Absolutely. We're trying to maximize the funding available.
The neighborhoods and everything.
Okay, this is harkening back to the Broad Beach issue that we had several years ago, where Broad Beach in Malibu was going to bring sand from Grimes Canyon, truck it through Fillmore to get to Malibu, and people were up in arms over the number of, rightfully so, the number of trucks.
That was over a course of multiple years. This is, you're talking, you know, maybe more, not more than two months.
Yeah, I just want us to be mindful of that, so that as soon as we do know a route and the number of trucks approximately, then we need to let the community know that.
The trucking route has to be approved through Roxanne. The bidder, I have to send her a qualified bidders list. We're waiting for, this is the key moment, to have the agreement accepted. Then all of that will transpire between Roxanne and myself.
Okay. I just want to be able to alert.
Yeah, we just want to be able, like she said, we want to be able, just tell the public.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
She was saying, she just wants to be able to alert the public.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. So an average truck carries ten yards of fluffed-up dirt, right? So then if it's belly dumps, it's usually fourteen yards. So on average, you're probably going to be running twenty to twenty-five trucks per day to try to maximize the time.
Okay. Okay. If we're running through, like down the one-twenty-six through Santa Paula or out the outskirts of wherever we end up, you mentioned Chiquita possibly, we just need to let the other communities know as well.
Okay.
Don't think you're going to go on to quite to Santa Paula. You would go probably into Grimes or to the end of town.
Okay.
So when we have the haul route identified, we'll definitely keep you informed. We'll put something on the website, and if it is impacting neighboring communities, we'll let them know as well.
The one thing we were blindsided on, on that previous incident with Broad Beach, is Moore Park signed the contract and did not inform us. So I want to make sure that if we're going to sign a contract, that we let them know that this is happening for going over Grimes Canyon.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be complaining back to us.
I know, right? She was on the other foot. Okay, we'll definitely be good neighbors and make sure people know. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to say something. I want to thank you for your time and the excellent presentation, and it's very important that we do this, seeing all the disasters that happened in the Central Valley because they didn't maintain their infrastructure, and if we maintain our infrastructure, hopefully we won't have what, like, what happened with the sewer. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome, absolutely.
All right. No, I just want to say thank you also, and it's very interesting knowing that bigger picture of the Ventura County Water Protection District and sort of that, I guess, environmental, I want to say conflicts going back and forth.
Yeah, the permitting, yeah.
But it seems like it is, and that, has that been going for a while? Is there a resolution anywhere in the near future?
I don't see a resolution real, I mean, it's been going on for almost ten years.
Oh, wow.
And it's ongoing about fish habitat, and, you know, it's way beyond my, what I do. But, yeah, Lance is working on it, and I think that as this drives the, we're inviting the county out to see the basin be cleaned out so that some of the mechanics of how we do it and what the O and M manual has to include, and, you know, the nuts and bolts of getting this done, I think it'll give the county more comfort level of them being able to take it over, and that ought to help move the conversation forward as well.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll motion that city council approves the agreement with Hearthstone that will authorize reimbursement of costs for performing the post-storm cleanout of Pole Creek Debris Basin through the Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Seven, and authorize the city engineer and finance director to approve dispersment amounts.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, go find Dave and Chris. Huh? I figured they'd be wandering around all over the place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine D.
Should I wait till they get back?
I'll wait till they get back, and then I'll read the congratulations letter. See, he got all the way around the building. I meant, we're getting ready to. Okay, we're going to move on to item number D, terminating the sale of City of Fillmore Local Emergency Declaration resulting from the sewer line collapse, approval and amendments to agreements with Toro, and I messed this up last time, Ferreira. Ferreira, and appropriation of funding.
So, yeah, welcome. Thank you, thank you for having me. The exciting news, the construction is complete. This allows us to terminate the emergency declaration. Everything is not complete. The construction of it is complete, but, you know, we're still working on the paperwork and trying to get reimbursement from FEMA, and the hard work is kind of, is now. But we can terminate the emergency based on the work that has been done. The emergency has been subsided, and we're not incurring, you know, a daily cost of pumping cost. The road is open. I think Caltrans is putting together a punch list of things that we might have to do to finish up the work on Highway one-twenty-six. But I have some notes here just to kind of give you a status on where we're at. Toro's contract, we probably will need to do a minor adjustment. We're still working out some details with that, with their final invoice and getting the final change orders worked out. But it's looking like it's going to be minor if we have to do an adjustment. Right now, their contract stands at three point nine-five million, and I think if we're looking at an adjustment, it's going to be in the neighborhood of about two hundred thousand, if at all, okay? Ferrera's contract with all of the addendums was about four point four million, as it played out. I don't think that we're going to need to do another adjustment to their contract. We're looking at the final invoice right now, and they did end up giving us a credit on some of the prior invoices, because as I went through, I looked at them and called out some things, so they gave us about seven, eight, eighty thousand dollars in credit. Patriot Environmental and Rain for Rent, their total contracts combined about three point five million dollars for the cleanup and the pumping. And then project management with construction management and engineering with the Will Dan team is a little over two hundred and fifty thousand, estimated. Now, those are a lot of big numbers. But the exciting thing is that we have been approved with the FEMA reimbursement at a rate of ninety-three point seven-five. So to put that into perspective, twelve point one million is looking around the total expenditure of that, this project. Reimbursement rate of ninety-three point seven-five means that FEMA would be reimbursing us for eleven point three-four million. We'd be on the hook for somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars for all of that work. Another good thing that's coming out of the discussions we've had with FEMA is there was a thought that I held off on. thought that I held off on doing, um, uh, hazard mitigation, which is epoxy coating of the manholes, assuming that it was gonna have to be under the hazard mitigation. They're actually telling us to go ahead and put it in. The hazard mitigation, uh, program would have reimbursed us at a 75% rate, and we would've been on the hook for 25%. This, uh, by them try, you know, getting us to include it, um, it means it's gonna be at that same 93.75% reimbursement rate. Uh, it's not a huge expenditure, but it is a new contract that we're gonna be putting out, and we'll have to go through the formal bidding process because the, we're ending the emergency declaration, um, if you, if you go with the recommendation. Um, so those are the, uh, the notes that I have, and so the recommendation is to, uh, adopt Resolution, uh, 233962, um, for the, uh, ending the, or terminating the city, uh, emergency.
Any questions?
I have a, at least one question. Um, as far as the processing of the, um, the emergency funding with FEMA, I know that's an ongoing process and can still take some time, um, but what is, um, like, what are the, the continued steps? Like, does it need to continue up, um, a, in an administrative chain, or is it just that the project is big enough that it takes time to review and then get processed at, is it at the right level essentially?
Yeah, I, I believe right now it is at the right level, and, um, I, Deborah and I have been working with the FEMA representative. I feel really comfortable that things are running smoothly with that. I do think that the process is going to, um, i- it should be a, a fairly efficient process. A, a lot of the reason for that efficiency in, in us getting reimbursed that I'm hopeful for is because we, when we did all of the steps, we laid everything out, um, in a very clear manner. We kept things separated so that there wasn't a lot of, uh, here, let's mix this with that, and, you know, we, we didn't have the same contractor working on the pumping as, you know, which is the emergency response a- and the, and the construction. We had everything under contract. We didn't do a lot of change orders. There were things that came up that we, we, we had to address, which FEMA's already looked at, at these things, and, and they're comfortable with them. Um, we, they opened the projects last week in their portal, their system, and when they opened those, that started a 60-day window. Now, we have 60 days to add new stuff to that. Um, that's a good and a bad thing, right? We have almost everything lined up to be able to give to them within the next few weeks. Um, but, th- they're gonna keep that 60-day window. Um, so, you know, we're already looking at 60 days before we can even close the, the window for what we're asking for reimbursement. Um, but I don't think it's gonna be, you know, a super, super long process because we've laid everything out, and, uh, we tried to get an answer from them on that, too, and it was like, hey, you know, what's like the most efficient, you know, uh, reimbursement that you've had? And we really couldn't, we couldn't get them the budget on it, like, we, we tried to get an answer, but it didn't, it didn't work, work, uh, for, for us to get any sort of number or whatnot, but, um, yeah, they, they didn't give us a number, but they did give us, hey, you look, this looks like a pretty simple, straightforward, you've done everything, laid it out, as long as, you know, all the paperwork and, and everything matches. I think, I think they're, they're looking at it being a pretty efficient process.
Thank you, um, and just to confirm, there was no new debt taken on by the city to cover the costs upfront, correct? That all the expenses have come from our reserve funds and, and the appropriate reserves in that, in that sewer fund?
Yes, uh, Deborah would be better to speak to that, but we, there was mo-, money moved from some funds to other funds. There may have been borrowing from, you know, some funds to other funds, but there was no new loans, no new, new debt incurred.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, uh, Mayor, just wanna make a comment, just to say thank you. Troy, um, wonderful job on this emergency project that you've taken on, uh, and, just gonna say also thanks to, to Deborah, and I know Roxanne, that you all were a team and worked really well.
It really was a team.
Doing the, doing that work, so we appreciate it, and the residents here do.
We, we thank you for hanging on with it for so long. It's, it's your first project when you got here, right?
Yes, it, it was a team effort, and it, it was, I mean, it, unexpected stuff, you know, but it's not, not anything that I'm not used to, you know? Have you been around the, the industry long enough and city government, like, these things happen. Um, but it's nice to work with a great team. Uh, Dave was very supportive. Erica helped put together the contracts and keep things moving. Roxanne and her team with the design and getting things, uh, managed, you know, the construction management aspect of it. It really was a full-team effort, um, managing the, you know, the, the funds and the costs. I mean, Deborah came in, uh, kinda cold and literally had, this was, this was her first, uh, you know, major crisis, too, so, uh, very, very good team effort to, to work on, but it's, it, it was, uh, it, it's good that it's over, too. It's like little celebrations, right?
Yeah.
So, we just have the, the FEMA stuff to, to work on.
Did the city manager authorize a vacation for all of you now?
Haven't, haven't asked yet.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, with Amber? No? Okay.
Well, I'd like to, uh, move that the City Council adopt Resolution 23 dash 3962, terminate the declaration of a local emergency arising from the collapse of your sewer manhole, which rendered the downstream pipeline unusable.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second the motion. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item nine E, consideration approval of expenditures for holiday decorations.
Good evening, Council, um, Mayor, residents of Fillmore. This is a fun topic to talk about. So, tonight I'm here requesting, um, funding, if you approve it, for City Council to receive and discuss this report and the options for expenditure for holiday decorations. And then if you approve that, authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement in the amount you decide tonight, in the form approved by the city attorney. And so, the City of Fillmore recognizes the extra seasonal joy, the holiday season, and the decorations at Central Park, and also on our main, um, central business district, and how that provides added benefits to our residents. Um, we also understand that it's important for our community to pride itself of having that small-town living. And so, some of the things that you may wanna consider tonight is, if you approve this funding, um, there's a couple of benefits that we have outlined that the constituents would be benefiting from. Um, fostering community spirit, so the holiday season is a time where our community comes together to celebrate and connect with one another and to make memories. Um, it also adds on the enhancing of tourism and commerce, so, um, a lot of times during the holiday season, outside, um, residents that are not Fillmore residents may travel here to, you know, if there's a, a big, um, lighting event or something, they might come up to try to take pictures, and they might have friends in town to, um, also be part of that, and then spend their dollars in our local businesses. Um, it also creates memorable experiences, so the enchanting ambience created by holiday decorations and lights adds a touch of magic to our city, and it fosters community pride, which I think we already have that instilled in our residents, but it also solidifies that. We went out and we requested, um, three quotes from three different vendors. Um, two of the vendors provided us with quotes, so, um, San Nick's Christmas Lighting and Decor provided a proposal. We had a second proposal from Bright Life Designs, and the decor group, after numerous follow-ups, they decided that they couldn't provide us with anything, so it was a non-responsive. Um, based on the proposals and after looking at the type of decorations that can be provided, staff is recommending that City Council select San Nick's, um, Christmas Lighting and Decor as the, um, potential vendor, and we are recommending that you approve an allocation of either 5,000, 10,000, or 15,000 dollars for a one-time purchase of these items, um, coming from the American Rescue Plan Funds, or ARPA. Um, I think 15,000 dollars would probably give us a little bit more decorations in the sense of having options. So, I put together, um, some of the pictures and the renderings that were provided, just for those that are here in the audience and at home. So, some of the options that, um, you can consider tonight is, like, this big ornament that could be placed on Central Park. We could probably even try to, um, if approved tonight, start some sort of a hashtag campaign, um, to get it running in social media, just an idea. That one runs, uh, 10,500. Um, there's also this other candy cane arch. Um, there's also this other option. And then, there's renderings for the central district business that are gonna be non-lighted. I wanna make sure that everyone understands that. We are working through Public Works. I know that they've been having their quarterly utility meetings with all of the providers, but that's gonna be a more in-depth capital improvement project to be able to get the lighting there. But, as part of the proposal, we did ask for some of the, um, decorations to be festive and still allow us to decorate the, the main Central Avenue, but without having to tap into the poles, how we were historically doing it. So, those are some of the options that the vendor is providing, and that concludes my presentation, and just open for you to discuss and see whether you wanna consider this for this holiday season.
Any questions for Erica?
I have a question just about, um, will, will these, any of these new purchased items be used to add to any existing Christmas decorations that we have?
Correct.
Can you describe maybe what those are, and?
So, we have something similar to this right now, and they're actually on this same prominent, uh, close to the railroad, and I think those are, are actually put on through Public Works as well. So, the expansion would be having the bigger, um, ornament right next to the, um, city tree that we have, and then that would probably bring more attraction. People can take pictures there. Like I said, we could probably start a hashtag campaign to try to bring other people into town, just an idea. But, we do have already existing decorations, and this will be just expanding it and making sure that we're actually also covering the main, uh, business district on Central, which has been, um, a priority, I guess, previously, but after COVID, we had, um, the way how we were wiring was not, um, the way we should have been wiring it. We were tapping into the Edison pole, so we need to now expand that into a capital improvement project, get the pedestals, um, installed, and so it's a bit more involved process to be able to get that. So, it's an alternative to make sure that we're still decorating and adding the festivities to the, the merchants in downtown as well.
So, it might not be until after that project that we get to have the full combined effects of all the, the decorations we already have?
Correct, and I know for a fact, 'cause I checked in with Public Works staff today this morning, that they have mentioned it already. We initiated the process in 2020. The person who had been assigned from Edison, we were getting ready to get the design of the, um, the whole project, then that person got moved to a different division. We then started to try to get ahold of the new person who was starting from zero. So, now Troy and his team is actually having a quarterly meeting, and I know for a fact that they have already put this on their radar, and I think you're meeting with them this week. So, it's gonna be reminded and follow up on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, question, Erica, on, um, the, I know, um, Chris said purchase, but is it a, it's a rental?
Not for this one. For this one, we would be purchasing. So, there were two quotes. One of them is, was rental, the other one is purchase. So, the San Nick's one would be not leasing but purchasing it. They do not lease to, to this geographical area. The majority of their clients are like, it based on like, the, um, San Gabriel and also Orange County, and so because of the distance of where Fillmore's located, I was told that we couldn't have a lease agreement. So, we would be purchasing it. They will give us a delivery for free. They did mention that, if you were to approve that, but we would be responsible for storing them and making sure that we keep up with them for future years to come.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying, 'cause when I saw rental on the price, I thought, oh, and then using ARPA money, wait a minute, if we have to constantly be renting these, you know, for future years, what would that be?
We wanted to explore both ideas, so that's why, um, one of the proposals mentions the leasing.
Got it. Okay, great. And then one more follow-up question. Um, on our tree that we have, and I, I, I love the lighting, well, I know we're gonna discuss about it and the idea of a bulb or a, or a walk-through gift box, um, but is there a way that we can increase the lighting, uh, part of this process of our Christmas tree? 'Cause I just have a feeling it'll be outshined if we go something else. I always felt it needs a little bit more brightness anyhow.
We can definitely work with, uh, the Parks and Recreation's, um, team, because I know that the, the tree, how historically we've, um, decorated is like a group usually is the one that sponsors that yearly, and correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong. Um, so we can definitely work, and then if you approve the budget, we can finagle where we have enough money to maybe buy additional lighting to up the tree and make sure that it doesn't like, one, you know, the ornament hooks over the tree and is just like even.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have one last question. Words, the, the money that we're looking to use from ARPA, was that potentially, um, unused money for, for the down-hav rehabilitation, so it's kind of targeted in the, the same area, or?
There, some of the money would be coming from that unused portion, but we also have other monies that are coming back, for example, the reimbursement from the pulver plastering. So, there's a fund balance. So, I mean, if you wanna break it down, you could say, hey, we, we're reallocating some of the fund from the DT rehab program into economic boosting. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Erica, thank you so much for all this research, putting this together, and this is something I, since I moved to Fillmore, people have been asking about, um, since I was in, first on council. They, people saying, we need Christmas decorations or holiday decorations. We need to look festive through the holidays. And, I mean, I'm thrilled that we have a potential funding source for it. Um, so, but can you elaborate a little bit more for me, and I didn't quite catch everything you said with regard to not being able to light the ones on the light poles yet because of the, um, the power issue, or?
So, we don't really have pedestals in, on Central Avenue, and so how historically it's been done hasn't been the proper way. I think that's how I wanna go ahead and, and ward it, and so it poses a liability for the city, and so that's why we're no longer lighting it. Um, and we're now alternatively going through the process to make sure that we are rectifying that, so that we have the proper pedestals installed, so then we can have power and use ornaments that can be powered. So, as an alternative right now, because we understand this is important, we are recommending that we purchase ornaments that still will make the district, like, the Business Central District look festive, but doesn't necessarily mean for us to have to power it. We try to work with the, um, alternative of solar, but solar is hit and miss, and then sometimes if we're gonna get a rainy season, you're not getting the same amount of sun, and then you just start getting complaints because they're not, one's lighting, the other one's not. So, I think at this point, it's probably better to just use the, uh, or I'm recommending that we just use the non-lighting, um, decorations for now, until we can get the capital improvement.
So, the ones that we'd be purchasing, we wouldn't be able to light even after we had the poles?
I mean, we can buy lights afterwards and just put the lighting. That shouldn't be a problem. So, here's some of the examples that are non-lighting. So, if you could see how there's like that garland. I mean, once we have a capital improvement project in place, we have pedestals, we could just buy lighting and just string it with the garland, and it could just be added on in the future.
But, we still have, we still have the ones that we used to use in storage, don't we?
I believe we do. I don't know.
We could rehang those up if-
Correct.
If.
I don't think I've ever seen those.
We used to have them, we had them on every pole in Central.
I have a question. Um, on those that you're just talking about, the ones that were lit here along the walkby, walkway by the, um, um, by the train, are those, those were, those are ones that could potentially, if we have power back on, uh, Central Avenue through pedestals, that we could?
Correct, we could just remove those. For now, we're just using those here, 'cause there's power.
Because we have power, okay.
And so at least we're decorating more Central Plaza as well. But yeah, long-term, we can move those as well or just add on. There's other things too that staff has in storage as well.
Great. Thank you.
Albert? Okay. I was going to say, Albert and I got to see all these when we were at the ISCS, and that's where we're looking, going, maybe we should try this for Fillmore. And I think the special attention needs to be, I meant, we need to do something for Central Avenue, because they're the ones that are the biggest people that are complaining about, you know, not having this, not, at least if they see something like this, they're going to think, the city is at least listening and we're doing something about it. That's kind of my feeling. And then once we get that, we get the other Edison things where to wait, we can shift anything around and make everything work if we need to.
Well, that's what I'm wondering is, would it make more sense to still initial, this initial purchase, to purchase the ones for the light pole, light posts that light up even though we wouldn't light them this year? But assuming that the Edison thing is fixed by next December, 2024?
We could explore that. The only thing I would, you would have technically a cable hanging that doesn't connect to anything. I mean, staff could probably wrap it around, but I don't know if being out in the weather, it might deteriorate it, and then by the time we're ready to use it, it might not work. I mean, that's just the unintended consequence, I guess. It's just my two cents on that.
If we approve, let's say 15,000, that's enough for you guys to go and do something.
Yes.
It proves, I mean, whether it's purchase, whether it's rental, it's going to give us enough money to do, make it look nice.
And then you could also think about having the bigger ornament as the gateway to the actual central business district, too.
I forgot the one we had seen at, didn't we see the square one?
There was a big, yeah, there's a big, I don't think it's here, I think it was really pricey, the gift box?
Yeah, that one looks really nice, but maybe that's why they had it there.
It was close to, if I recall correctly, I think it was a little bit over $20,000. So.
Well, I'll comment that I like the ornament, and I think the kids of town would love it. They would just have such a ball just walking through it, and like you said, a great, a great place to take photos. So that in combination with, you know, the staff's, you know, ideas for how to decorate Central Avenue with non-lighting, I'm on board with. It'd be a combination of those two.
They had a seat in there with Sam.
I don't know. So, I'll go ahead.
I'd like to entertain a motion to, we allocate some money, let them take it and run with it and see what they can do. I mean.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I don't know what else to do, because we can sit here every poll and go through each item and no argue over each one, but that's not going to get us anywhere.
Okay, I will make a motion to receive this report and discuss the funding options for expenditure holiday decorations, which we've done, and authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement in the amount of $15,000.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
By city council in a form approved by the city attorney for holiday decorations of Central Park and Downtown Business District.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. I don't know which one, either Christine or Albert.
Albert can take it.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to item number nine F, Second Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement with Government Temp USA LLC for Financial Analysis and Accounting Consulting Services.
Mine might not be as festive, but. So good evening, council members, Mayor Austin, and I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Today, staff requests the city council approve two amendments to two professional service agreements with GovTemp USA for Financial Analysis and Accounting Consulting Services. Both agreements will be extended till March 29, 2024, increase the not exceed contracts as detailed in the staff report, and increase the hour, the rate of these services from $112 to $116.20 per hour. On November 8, 2022, the city council approved a contract with GovTemp USA LLC for Financial Analysis Consulting Services to assist the finance, city's finance department. And on February 8, 2023, the city manager entered to a separate agreement for consulting services. On April 11, 2023, the city council approved the first of the amendments to the agreements that extended to October 27, 2023, and increased hourly rate from 84 to $112 an hour. The consultant staff has provided much-needed support to the financial operations of the city, while the newly hired financial director and accounting supervisor are accumulating knowledge with the city's financial responsibilities and processes. In addition, the recruitment for the accountant position, which was approved by city council in May 2023, is still ongoing. While the, with the upcoming audits, annual financial report, and preparation for the fiscal year 2425 budget process, the finance department believes the extension of the agreement with consultant is the best, best interest of the city. If the Second Amendments and the agreement with the consultant are approved by the city council, both will be extended to, again, March 29, 2024, and increase the hour rate to $112 to $116.20. The fiscal impact would be, both contracts would be $335,384,098, respectively, to the not exceed limit. This item also meets the city council goals of financial management. End of my presentation. Not as exciting as the ornaments, but I am available for questions.
I just want to maybe clarify from the staff report that despite the apparent, you know, large number required to pay for the change in salaries, that it is potentially still with, under the budget allocated for the position, which is currently vacant.
Well, it's actually for our complete budget. I'll say there's their budget plus an additional dollars amount.
Okay.
Yes.
So currently, we're saving money, even though?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be on any overage.
Right, okay.
For the general fund, yes.
And what is, you mentioned that the accountant search is still ongoing. Have there been eligible candidates that maybe didn't work out? Or, I mean, I know you can't go into probably too many detail, but is it?
It has been a tough recruitment. We just, we extended it, I think, I believe, two times at least, and we've now officially closed. So we now want to go through the process of the applicant and then go through the interview process. It's just, not just with the city, but other cities, and as well as the county of Ventura, having issues just filing candidates.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, and you may have answered. So when we hire this new position?
Which one?
For the one that's open right now?
Oh, the accountant, yes.
So when they get hired, next year, will this contract be renewed, or will that position cover this?
This, this, what's happening right now is we're in the middle of really going through years of financial, year financial process and doing cleanup, as well as right now, we're hitting the ground running with various audits that we're going through. And while I am now getting accumulated to it, as well as my new accounting supervisor, we still need that extra person just to kind of give us that wriggle room. And right now, we're really working on it, and if we pull this back, I see us kind of stepping back and then having to struggle while we're trying to get new accumulated to the new accountant to be trained, because a lot of training comes through the process as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, notion that we approve two amendments for two professional services agreements with GovTemp USA LLC for Financial Analysis and Accounting Consulting Services to extend both agreement terms until March 29, 2024, and also to increase the not to exceed contract amounts as detailed below, and to increase the hourly rate for these services from $112 an hour to $116.20 an hour.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, I think, by Carrie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to nine G, adoption of resolution 233963. What was that?
Oh, no, Deborah's still staying at the podium.
Okay, I was like, I'm reading, okay. 233963, authorizing the filing of a claim for fiscal year 2023, 24 Transportation Development Act funds and local transportation funds, Article 8 claim.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Austin, I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a tax resolution, which is 239, 3963, authorizing the city manager or his designated to sign and file claim with the Ventura County Transportation Commission for the allocation to the city of $848,756 of the Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2324. SB 325, which is known as the Transportation Development Act, or TDA, of 1971, provides funding for transit and non-transit-related purposes that comply with regional transportation plans. The local transportation fund, or LTF, portion of the act is financed with a quarter cent per dollar of the general sales tax collected statewide. The funds are allocated each county, including Ventura County, with a portion passed through to Ventura County cities for transit and street maintenance activities. Then Ventura County Transportation Commission, or VCTC, administers the funds. For fiscal year 2324, VCTC determined the city Fillmore's TDA LTF amount as $848,756. The staff proposes that the city use $348,718.98 of these funds for transit's operating costs. If all the transit needs are met, the TDA rule allows the remaining LTF allocation, which will be $500,037.02, to be used for street and road projects. The city has submitted its fiscal year 2324 Valley Express local contribution of the $348,718.98 to VCTC. Approval of the TDA claim and resolution adoption will allow the city to recover the general fund monies that used to issue this payment. Adoption of resolution 2393963 will result in the city's receipt of revenues of the $537.02, $500,037.02. Hopefully, I wasn't saying $500, we're getting $500,000 for streets and roads, and again, the remaining $348,718.98 for transit operation costs. I use the detail because when you're doing the claim, they look at it, and if I'm a penny off, they're like, oop, send it back. And you'll see me going, okay, I missed my two cents. So just want to make sure that I'm clear on the number there for you. This item meets the city council in the area fiscal management. We are good stewards of the public tax dollars by ensuring the long-term financial stability of the city of Fillmore's government. This is the end of my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Okay, city member, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a touch resolution 23-3963, authorizing city manager to sign and file a claim with the Ventura County Transportation Commission for the allocation to the city of $848,756 of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2324.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 10, committee, commission, and board reports. Open up to council.
Just a brief potential update. The council, two plus two with the school district, is scheduled to meet with the school district in the near future. There's potential the date might change. It was supposed to be this week, but we're trying to confirm that. But look forward to discussing hopefully some items about the playing fields and availability, and just how we can continue to work better with the school district for improving access, and then whatever items they propose as well. But that should be hopefully reportable back to the council at the next meeting.
Anybody else?
Yeah, we spent about a part of last week, our city manager, council member Christina Villasenor, and Mayor Austin in Sacramento at the League of California Cities Conference. So it was two full days of pretty heavy-duty conferences, you know, one after the other. But it was, I think, productive. A lot of the sessions were on the legislations coming out from Sacramento that the league is supporting or working to fight against. A lot to do with housing, but it was informative. I know I came home with tired, but also with a whole lot of, you know, inside information that was very beneficial.
Oh, yeah, and Mayor, thank you, and also for your mic. Thank you, Carrie, for talking about League of Cities. It was a really great conference. And trying to piggyback up on Chris's comment about forthcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, I'll be attending, I think I'm, I'm not sure if you're going, Carrie, to the Fentanyl meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I will represent for Fillmore. The county leaders are having a meeting on the Fentanyl crisis and invited folks from all the different cities, so I'll be attending that for Fillmore, and we'll report back at our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 11, unless you're going to?
I just want to add, I also left off that our assistant city attorney was also with us at the conference. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to item number 11, city manager, city manager verbal report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just one item tonight, this Saturday at Rio Vista Elementary School from 9:00 AM to noon is a bicycle rodeo sponsored by the Fillmore Citizen Patrol. Also have our sheriff's department out there, and the fire department will be out there as well. They'll be giving out bicycle helmets as long as they have available, so first come, first served on that. And they'll also give you some bicycle safety tips out there as well. So again, that's Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 AM to noon at Rio Vista Elementary Park. That's all I have.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on to closed session. We're going into closed session. The city council will conduct a closed session because there is significant exposure to litigation in one case. The facts and circumstances giving to exposure to litigation, the city received a demand letter, switch, to switch to voting districts. A copy of the letter is available for inspection. We're going to go into closed session.
The City Council met in closed session to discuss significant exposure to litigation in one case. The City Council did not take any reportable action. We're going to adjourn our meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 on Tuesday, October 10th.